Well, I see the internet.
I call the order, the city council meeting Monday, October 27th. Record of attendance, round to please.
Baker?
Here.
Drake?
Here.
Lindsey?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Teachout?
Here.
Turnbo?
Here.
And Ware?
Yes, here.
We'll start off with the opening prayer by Tom Robinson and the pledge of allegiance by Matt Drake.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to care for the world you have made. We ask that your blessing would rest on this council, that you would give us great vision and enthusiasm for our work. Please bless the efforts of our hands, the bonds between us, and the influence of our work in this community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. First item that we have is Resolution 2510-02, recognizing August 24th as Officer Henry Franklin Day. And I want to read this proclamation.
Resolution?
Resolution, proclamation. I had to print it out a little bit larger. Recognizing August 24th of each year as Officer Henry Franklin Day. Whereas Officer Henry Jason Ray Franklin made the ultimate sacrifice for his community, killed in the line of duty on October 6, 2025, while responding to a mutual aid call in Mississippi County. Whereas Officer Franklin was born on August 24, 1984, in Carroll, Illinois, and the son of Harold Franklin and Sally Turner Doily. And Officer Franklin retired from the US, United States Army after a distinguished 10, distinguished 10-year career during which he completed two tours in Iraq and continues serving his country as a member of the National Guard for an additional 10 years, retiring in 2023. Officer Franklin was highly respected member of the Sykeson Police, Sykeson Department of Public Safety since 2013, where he served in several notable roles, including member of the Special Operations Group, Southeast Missouri Homeland Security Response Team, Sykeson DPS Honor Guard, School Resource Officer, and served proudly as handler of K-9 Odin. And Officer Franklin is survived by his wife Leah Franklin and four children, Lauren Brayze, Austin Brayze, Audrey Franklin, and Addison Lancaster, along with many other loving family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council as follows. In the memory of Officer Henry Franklin and his sacrifice, his birthday, August 24th, shall hereafter be perpetually known and celebrated as Officer Henry Franklin Day in the City of Sykeson. And all flags on the City of Sykeson facilities will be flown half-staff on that day as a memorial to his courage and unwavering commitment to protect and serve. Read this day, 27th of October, 2025, this discussion voted point as follows. Roll call vote.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
2510-2.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote, please.
Drake?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Teachout?
Yes.
Turnbo?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
And Baker?
Yes.
Now understandably, the commitment that Officer Franklin made to the City of Sykeson and he gave his life in that service, this is not a once a year deal. It's going to happen every year, every year from now on. So every year on August 24th, all flags will be flown at half-staff. We'll have to make sure we make a note on all calendars and we'll do some special presentations on that day. Thank you. The next item is the first and second reading of emergency bill 6388, Sykeson Airport Projects 23-077B-1 and 230-077B-1, Runway Pavement Maintenance and Apron Improvements. The chair would accept a motion for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, hold in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading, tap of the please.
Bill number 6388, as approved, shall become emergency ordinance number 6388, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Sykeson, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Sykeson Airport Project 23-077B-1 and Air 230-077B-1, Runway Pavement Maintenance and Apron Improvements. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Sykeson, Missouri as follows. This bill includes Section 1 through 7, all of its parts and subparts, and it's read and introduced to council this first time this 27th day of October, 2025.
Zach, you have the floor.
Yes, council, this is, um, excuse me. We have two aviation grants from MoDOT that we actually awarded construction back in the spring. Apex paving. Now that we know costs, we have sent that, we've got a notice to proceed from MoDOT. They've run the numbers and they're going to fund this through basically three different pots of money. As you'll see on your letter, um, let's see, the State Aviation Trust Fund is $800,000, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act 51170, and the non-primary entitlement is $36,358. To enter into each of these agreements, they require the city to have a resolution to commit to funds and authorize a signatory, which would be the mayor. So this is requesting your approval of this resolution to enter into these three grant agreements for each funding source. That funds basically the apron and runway improvements. So we're doing, there's two grants, one for the apron, one for the runway, paid for with three different pots of money. So it's kind of convoluted, but.
And the city's command looks like it's only about 10%.
Yes.
Cost to 10%?
10%, some are 95%, paid 95%. I think the runway is 95% and the apron was 90%.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing the chair accept the motion for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, hold in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading, tap of the please.
Bill number 6388, as approved, shall become emergency ordinance number 6388, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Sykeson, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Sykeson Airport Project 23-077B-1 and Air 230-077B-1, Runway Pavement Maintenance and Apron Improvements. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Sykeson, Missouri as follows. This bill includes Sections 1 through 7, all of its parts and subparts, and it's read and introduced the second time, the 27th day of October, 2025.
Zach, do you have anything to add to your statement?
Any questions? We're excited about it.
Questions or comments? Seeing now the chair accept the motion.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 6388.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote, round to please.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Teachout?
Yes.
Turnbo?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Drake?
Yes.
The next item is request to remove employee from municipal court bank account. And Amanda, you have the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back in August of 2025, Sherry Givens was our, who was our court clerk, transferred to become our Public Works Administrative Assistant. With that transfer, we need to remove her from the municipal court, the municipal court bank account. But Southern Bank requires council action to do that. So tonight I'm here to request just council action for allowing us to remove Sherry from the municipal court bank account.
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing now the chair accept the motion.
I make a motion to remove Sherry Givens from the Southern Bank account.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote, round to please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Teachout?
Yes.
Turnbo?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
And Lindsey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, request to authorize purchase of road salt, and Mr. Dial?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. The city needs to purchase road salt for this upcoming winter season. The purchase of road salt is a ever-changing process due to the number of vendors and the amount available and also the prices changing from year to year. This year, we was able to find the availability of 200 tons of salt from Bruce Oakley Incorporated at a price of $110 a ton for the total price of $22,000. We contacted five vendors and we received two bids, one from Rock Salt USA for $140 per ton and the other was from Bruce Oakley Incorporated for $110. We are requesting the city's council authorization to purchase 200 tons of road salt from Bruce Oakley Incorporated at the price of $110 a ton. This is a budgeted item.
How many tons do we have on hand right now?
Uh, we're estimating about 400, maybe a little over.
Usually how much do we use a year? Just curiosity.
Depending on the, on the amount of winter events we have, typically, I mean, a little as 100 tons and sometimes 300 tons, I mean.
Y'all manage that real well over the last few years. I don't have any problems with it. I just was curious how much we put out there. Now, wasn't there something about a brine truck or something?
We've purchased a brine maker. It should be delivered here in the next few weeks. So we'll be able to do pre-treating. Our dump trucks, they have tanks, but they're not exactly big enough for what we need. So probably next year, we'll come to council to upgrade those trucks to hold a larger capacity of salt brine so we can use the trucks. But we will put salt brine out this year.
Any questions or comments? And the chair accept the motion.
I make a motion that we authorize the purchase of the road salt from Bruce Oakley Incorporated, $110 a ton for 200 tons.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote, round to please.
Teachout?
Yes.
Turnbo?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you. The next item is to request for authorization to purchase patrol vehicle for the Department of Public Safety. And Captain Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
So DPS is requesting approval to purchase a 2026 Dodge Durango from a state-approved vendor that we've purchased from the last four or five years or so. Dodge Durango would come to a total cost of $42,982. It is in stock right now and available to be picked up. And this also was a budgeted item along with the outfitting of the vehicle. And so we're just seeking approval to proceed with that purchase.
Any questions or comments?
Is this a replacement or an add-in?
Uh, everything that we buy is a replacement. I mean, we'll, we'll come to council eventually with surplus vehicles, some that have been damaged beyond our control in accidents that were not our fault and some that are just have outlived their life expectancy.
Why the Durango? I mean, it's a.
Uh, when we look at these and I mentioned this.
Do you have any now?
We do. Yes, sir. Yeah, we have four. We started buying those a couple of years ago when what we ran into is we were buying some Chargers and the Charger kind of proved to be too small of a vehicle for the patrol officers. Of course, we do both patrol and fire, so then they're having to pile the gear in there. It was a bad decision on my part. That's, we moved to those to try something different from Tahoes several years ago. Then we found the happy medium price-wise and the use of the vehicle in the Dodge Durango.
Any other questions? Seeing now the chair accept the motion.
I make a motion, we purchased the 2026 Dodge Durango.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote, round to please.
Turnbo?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Robinson?
Yes.
And Teachout?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item, request to accept funds from the SFY 26 Missouri Blue Shield Award Agreement for purchase of field equipment, operation equipment for Department of Public Safety. And Captain Broom, you have the floor.
Good evening. I'm not sure if you guys recall, I guess it was early this year, Governor Quixote passed or signed an executive order for an opportunity for communities to become Blue Shield communities. The council at that time passed a resolution, agreed that we would want to be a part of that Blue Shield community. It's basically just a crime reduction campaign among communities throughout the state of Missouri. And through that initiative, cities are able to go in and then apply for grant funding. This specific item is a grant for $50,000. There's no match at all. Basically, it's free money. I mean, of course, it's taxpayers' dollars, but that tax is spread out among the state instead of staying here locally, so that's, that's a benefit there. But what we proposed is that we buy 14 MDT computers or laptops that are in our patrol cars. These laptops are used by officers throughout the day very often, probably one of the most used piece of equipments that we have. So we're asking to accept the $50,000 in grant funds and then to purchase 14 Panasonic mobile data terminals, three Havas vehicle docking stations, and three Panasonic 120-watt car adapters. The total price for those is $53,350, which $3,350 is over that $50,000, but we would use budgeted money that we already have to cover the cost over $50,000.
Any questions or comments? Captain Broom? Seeing now the chair accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote, round to.
Ware?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Teachout?
Yes.
And Turnbo?
Yes.
Other item that we have that was a walk-on is 2019 John Deere 6120 sidearm mower transmission repair. And Mr. Dial, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council. Recently, as of last week, our John Deere tractor has the sidearm mower we use to mow ditches. Operator got off the tractor, cleaned the grass out from the grill, and when he got back in, wouldn't go back into, wouldn't come out of gear. John Deere came out and looked at it. They're dealing with the same situation with a similar tractor that MoDOT has. So their estimate is they're going to have to rebuild the transmission. So we asked for a price on what it costs to rebuild it, and they're just going to buy what they're putting into the MoDOT tractor as of right now. This is worst-case scenario that we would have to put in $15,882.92. To our knowledge, this repair can only be done locally with the John Deere dealership. Therefore, we only have the one price from Greenway Equipment. Because of that, we're asking council to approve this and it will come out of our equipment maintenance budget and our transportation sales tax item.
What's the value of the tractor?
I don't know to replace it. You're looking at probably right at $100,000, $120,000.
What's new compared to rebuild on the transmission?
Excuse me?
Isn't the transmission needs to be rebuilt?
Yes.
Have you priced the new one compared to the, because is there a warranty on the, on either?
No. I, there's no warranty on the tractor at all.
No, but I mean, on the transmission.
On a rebuilt transmission, I have no idea. I've never seen one, put one in a tractor.
If MoDOT's having tractors with the same problem.
Mm-hmm. Their tractor's done the same thing.
Then obviously John Deere's got a problem. Have they contacted?
We question them of that. They deny, of course, but like I said, we've talked to them about that particular situation. If there are ongoing problems, surely they should be able to figure out exactly what's going on on their behalf. But as of right now, we haven't gotten any response to that.
How long will it be before they get it repaired?
Uh, I'm not sure on that because we're at the end of our mowing season. We're not in a great big hurry, but we'd like to have it because that's a major part of our maintenance when we do use it.
Is that the only one we have like that?
Yes, sir. That's the only tractor we have. Right now, I think what we've finishing up that one ditch on the south into town and I think we have that one basin still to mow. That's, and our year's pretty much done with it. We're going into the leaf pickup machine scheduled here in a couple of weeks. Our same operator runs that truck, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just kind of, may not know what I'm looking at here though, but looking at the estimate, there's a, there's a subtotal up here of $13,000 and there's just a $2,000 charge. Do you know what that's?
I do not. Our mechanics got this quote the other day and I haven't went through the detailed part of it. They, they just told me that this is the worst-case scenario that we'd have. It may be cheaper, but this is the worst-case scenario. One of the biggest reasons, they got to take the cab off, off the tractor. They say that's one of the biggest differences between ours and MoDOT's, but.
That's what I was fixing to.
Other than that.
Yes, I was fixing to ask that, if it's transmission, why we're putting freon into it? So you just answered that question.
Yeah, they got to pull the cab.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing now the chair accept the motion. Or not.
I move. Authorize, did we authorize the, the work done on the new transmission repair with Greenway Equipment?
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote, round to please.
Baker?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Teachout?
Yes.
Turnbo?
Yes.
And Ware?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just still running.
Are there any other items to be brought before the council tonight?
Do I?
If there are none to be brought before the council, the chair accept the motion.
So moved.
Hold on, he's, come on.
Guys, relax, second.
Thank you. My concern is about transportation here in the.
Sir, I'm sorry, could you state your name also, state your name?
Oh, excuse me. My name is Elmer Mohammed. And I'm a citizen here in Sykeson. I've been here now for a little over 12 years. I'm from, originally from St. Louis, Missouri. And during that period of time, that transition, I was able to travel back and forth through the bus system, by-state transit system. And today, we don't have any type of public transportation here in this area. There's no train, there's no bus. And a lot of times when you don't have a mass transportation system, you're not able to mobilize the population, you're not able to grow and develop, and you end up suffering brain drain. And I was concerned about what do we need to do in order to have that type of transportation system set up here in this particular area between Cape Girardeau, Papa Bluff, and Sykeson? There should be some means of transportation.
Southeast Missouri Transit Authority.
Yeah, there's a transit authority, does it, it goes, does it go to Cape?
Kind of transit goes to Cape for sure.
Goes to Cape, but it doesn't go to Bluff, or does it go to Dexter, do you know?
I've seen it in Bluff.
You have?
So does Greyhound no longer stop here?
Greyhound does, no longer stops here. So I mean, I mean, the entity of, of a bus service, like what you're talking about Gray, Charlews or Greyhound or anything like that, you know, those are private entities and they make the decisions on where they put their, their terminals and. But we do have a local transit system that does go to Cape and you can catch a bus in Cape, but you have to make arrangements with them, you know, schedule it from, and they'll take you from here to Cape.
Well, my understanding, for a cab, it would cost $300 to take you to St. Louis and $300 back.
No, we're not, we're not talking about cab. We're talking about the, the transit system.
What transit system?
Scott County Transit System. It's upstairs right here.
From my understanding, they don't, matter of fact, they don't even, I think, what? Cape Girardeau? That's it.
Right, but what he's saying is you take it to Cape and then get on a bus at Cape and go to St. Louis.
Uh, there is no bus.
No bus at Cape?
No, no.
Where's the local, where's the closest?
You have to go, you would have to go to Papa Bluff to catch a train or a bus.
Yeah, I knew.
And Carroll, Illinois, now you can go to Carroll, but from my understanding, none of the transportation system go to Illinois.
Captain Smith?
I think the Greyhound still runs out of Matthews, Missouri, at the truck stop. I believe.
Matthew, no, sir. I just looked into that. No. They don't, they don't, they don't, they don't run through Matthews anymore.
I mean, we can look into this as far as trying to see if there's any other options, but I mean, the only options as we as a council, I mean, it's private entities that, you know, they, they know what their costs are, whether or not they put, you know, I know we don't have the availability for train because all our train are rail for like.
At one time, you had train here stop as far as the transportation, from my understanding.
If it has, it's been a long time. It had to be a long time, but the only thing we had here was a Greyhound bus stop, which was Kelletts at one time.
So what happened to that? I mean, I'm kind of curious exactly why would they move it to Matthews? And when I looked into it, they don't stop at Matthews. And matter of fact, they don't stop nowhere in this region.
I mean, all we can do is, is, is take it under advisement and see what options are out there, but it's their call whether they put a stop here in Sykeson. And you know, if they don't have it at Cape and, and it's only in Papa Bluff with the train, I mean, there's a reason for that because they weren't having enough customers. They were utilizing their services. But we can check into it and just see what the options are. But you know, the Scott County, I know that, did somebody, did you say you saw them in Papa Bluff? Do they go to Papa Bluff? Like once a week maybe or something like that? Is that once a week or twice a week or what is it?
You can call and make arrangements with them and they'll take you to, I think they even will go to St. Louis if they have to. But I mean, they, they will make arrangements to go to whether it's Cape or Dexter or Papa Bluff. You can call them and they'll make the arrangements.
That's Scott County Transit.
Yeah, I've got a flyer pulled up here, Cape Girardeau, Papa Bluff, St. Louis, and anywhere up to 200 miles from here.
So we do have a transit system in that is actually stationed upstairs. We give them space to be.
Yeah, I actually saw it.
Do you want their number to check with them tomorrow?
Uh, yes.
Okay. It's 472-3030.
Last Tuesday, I actually saw it in Mountain View.
Mountain View, Missouri?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm on the Greyhound website, they've got K-H-R, Greyhound does.
Greyhound does? So there is a Greyhound in Cape.
Does it give the address of the?
It's on the website.
What's that number again?
472-3030, 573 area code.
And he's, the.
573, 472, 30?
30.
30?
Yes, there is a Greyhound stop in Cape.
Greyhound.com.
Greyhound.com.
And so there's.
Nationally, Cape Girardeau's got one.
So you mean, you could take the Scott County Transit to Cape and catch a train, a bus there or if you had to make arrangements to go to Papa Bluff, you could catch a train there. So there are options, it's just, it's not, you know, like there's.
It's not well publicized.
And that, that might be the case, but if you call the Scott County Transit, you'll be able to, to be able to make arrangements, to be able to make it to any of those places.
Yeah, and they have like passes, like rider passes. I think there's 60 bucks for the general public.